Good evening. I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order for March 2nd at 7 o'clock. Can we please raise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I just want to briefly read our statement about the Douglas Puglisi Schools offers a diverse learning experience to meet the economic, social, physical, and emotional needs of all the students. We provide supportive, a safe and supportive and challenged learning environment in which students may achieve academic success and personal growth. Decisions are made in the best interest of our students. And this evening, we have a student representative here, Sophia Cher. I'm sorry if I slurred your last name. Can you please come forward and tell us why you're here?
Good evening. My name is Sophia Sherrier, and I'm a senior at the high school. I'm here to share with you some of the news and events of what's been happening these past few weeks. First off, the Douglas High School athletic teams have had an exciting past few weeks. Both the girls and boys varsity basketball teams, as well as the cheerleading team, held their senior night games to honor the senior athletes in some of their last home games of the season. Both the girls and boys varsity basketball teams will go on to compete in the state tournament. The 11 seed girls team will have a home game facing off against either Prospect Hill or Westport at 6:30 on Thursday. The theme is whiteout for the game. The boys team is the 21st seed, and they will be facing off against the 12th seeded team at Hall at 6:30 on Friday. The cheerleading team also had a successful competition last Friday, their first time competing in two years, showing a great effort and putting on a wonderful performance despite having to change their routine due to injuries. They qualified to regional, they qualified for regionals. In other athletic department news, family IDs open for spring registration for JV and varsity baseball, JV and varsity softball, and track and field. The spring sports information night is Monday, March 14th at DHS on the auditorium at 6:30 PM. Every student is required to attend with a parent or guardian. For news from the guidance department, quarter three progress reports were issued today in course selection for the 2022-2023 school year is underway. School counselors met with all the students during English classes to review the course selection process, and students and parents and guardians must approve courses in iPass. The annual Junior Job Shadow Day will be taking place this Thursday, March 17th. Permission forms for this exciting event for career readiness were distributed to juniors, and additional copies are located in the counseling office. Furthermore, DHS will offer the SATs during the school day on Wednesday, April 13th. Students must register with Mrs. Brosnahan in the counseling office by Tuesday, March 8th. DHS also offers after-school tutoring and homework help on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the school library from 2:00 to 3:00. Students can drop in for help with their work, and no advanced signup is required. Furthermore, Celebration Graduation is hosting a paint night on March 4th at the Soca Hall to support the senior class. Doors open at 6:00 PM, and the class begins at 6:30. Tickets are $40 and only available for purchase online. No tickets will be sold at the door because space is limited. Another exciting news in student life, the entire student population at DHS has been working rigorously hard the past few weeks towards the winter carnival class competition, which will be held on March 11th, with students preparing for various sports events like gator ball and volleyball, relay races, games like Family Feud and Quiz Bowl, window and wall decorating, and the infamous lip sync performances. The Spring Fling Dance hosted by the DHS Student Council will be held this Saturday from 6:30 to 9:30 in the cafeteria. Tickets can be purchased during lunches, $10 for individuals, $16 for couples. Don't forget that admission counts as points for winter carnival. Thank you for your time and attention. Have a nice evening.
Do you have any news to share about colleges with us?
Personally?
Personally?
Well, I've gotten into UMass Boston and Suffolk University so far. Most of my other colleges, I won't be hearing back from until April 1st, but I actually interviewed with a Harvard alum over vacation. So that was pretty exciting.
Where else are you applying?
I applied to quite a few schools, I think 15. But my, my, my dream school is Harvard, and I'm also really interested in Boston College.
Awesome.
Wow, fantastic.
Political science.
Oh, wow.
Environmental studies.
Wow, great.
Nice.
Well, if you come back from April break, you'll have some good news for us.
Yes, hopefully.
That'll be a nice treat for my birthday.
Yeah, that would be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Next item is public comment or communication. Anyone have any comments? Moving on, we don't have any old business to discuss, but we're moving to the new business, and it's to the superintendent's report, please.
All right. Good evening, everyone. A couple of things. I think my report's a little lengthy tonight. Want to start with an update. Obviously, we started Monday, February 28th, being mask-free in, or mask optional in our schools and on our buses. Been in the schools a couple of times this week, and it's been great to see the kids and staff without their masks on. Being inside the classrooms, being in the hallways, is that first day of school energy, and it's not just because we came back from February break, but there's a buzz inside the halls and inside classrooms. So it's been really great to see. Now, with principals today, and things seem to be going smooth, really limited issues or no issues, which is what we expect from, from our students. Anecdotally, about 10% to 15% of our kids in pre-K to eight have been choosing to wear a mask. Mr. Romano says that the high school, probably closer to a quarter of the kids are still wearing a mask. About 20% of the staff has been wearing a mask, from what I've seen from being around. So again, it's, we made the decision to go mask optional. It's great. The people are comfortable in, in doing that. As we've done throughout the pandemic, we're going to continue to monitor and follow the data, and if we have to adjust, we will. I also want to be clear that just because we're not wearing masks doesn't mean that COVID's gone away. It's still there. You know, over vacation, over the past few weeks, we all know people who've had it. Some people were in bed for three, four days. Some people were completely asymptomatic and, and felt fine. So we have to remember that COVID hasn't gone away, and we still have to be mindful of those safety precautions we have in place. Parents still need to be keeping kids at home if they're symptomatic, if they're not feeling great. There's test kits available in schools for parents to pick up. People can get vaccinated, so remember to keep those safety strategies and those mitigation strategies at mind. We're coming to a point now in the pandemic or endemic where we're learning to live with COVID and creating that new sense of normalcy. But I just want to keep on reminding people that even though we're mask-free or mask optional in school and on the buses, it hasn't gone away, and we still have to monitor and be mindful of our symptoms and staying home and keeping ourselves and everyone in school safe. So just want to end with that. Any questions about how the first few days of school back, being mask optional has gone?
Not, not so much that, but like, what are we thinking about for future plans on like graduation, prom? How are we going to handle that with all schools?
So I know Mr. Romano and I talked about it a little bit today in terms of, you know, baccalaureate and what we're going to do. As we're getting ready to enter into the tournaments, we're starting our basketball tournaments, we're having the kids inside the, the gymnasium. The approach we're going for is we're going to continue to be mindful, and we're not going to remove all safety barriers and remove all variables to start. The elementary school and the cafeteria are still eating in desks in rows, and Mr. Bell and Mr. Pope and Mr. Kalad asked me, can we go back to the tables? I said, let's wait a little bit before we remove that and see what happens. So I know I talked to Josh. We have a prom scheduled coming up, and again, if the venue is mask optional, we'll give kids the option whether or not to wear a mask or not wear a mask at it. We'll continue with that. Baccalaureate, we'll still have the conversation on. I don't know what other senior activities.
Well, so we have our class night, which, you know, we've been doing it outside the last couple of years, and that, I mean, we've done it two years in a row. It's kind of tradition now, the motorcade. So I think we really might continue the motorcade, and that kind of more relaxed atmosphere for class night has kind of been, I like it. So I think we'll continue that. We hadn't actually been talking about baccalaureate because we kind of assumed we'd still be in masks, and we didn't want to put 200 people in St. Dennis. Now that things have eased up, I'll bring, I'll get my graduation committee together, and we'll talk about if we have time to get that going. Kind of coincidentally, Alden Encore actually asked me about it, because it's really, if you baccalaureate, it's a big kind of music showcase for our students. And so he asked if, if he should be planning for that or not, and so I think we'll try to decide on Friday. We need to reach out to the pastors again, too. And since we last did it, there's been some turnover among, we have to see who's still on from the last time around, so.
We want to create that sense of normalcy back for kids.
Correct. And that's, I think that's what the community wants, and I think that's what we all want. And so it's like, what do we do to make sure we were making those steps in place and that the, that the community's hearing we are concerned about it, we are looking at it.
Absolutely.
What's happening with, in terms of like number reporting at this point?
So, it's a good question. I'm, I've, I've tracked the numbers at the state level and reported that out every Friday, and I'm going to continue to do that through the remainder of the year. Principals will share with me daily, weekly COVID numbers as to what our positive cases are. The issue now with tracking the, the data at the state level is everyone's doing the home test kits. So the state numbers, where you see 1.7% positivity rates or 2% positivity rates and case counts, that's only coming from people who are actually going to CVS and getting tested. The home kits, unless you're reporting them, aren't getting counted, so the data's skewed. So I'm going to continue reporting at the state level every Thursday, as I've been since the beginning of the year. Principals will share with me case counts for number of kids positive every week. But again, we have to be mindful that if you remember prior to Christmas, you couldn't find a test kit, and now everyone has eight, nine, 10 in their homes. So people are really doing the home test kits, which is skewing the numbers we're getting from the state level.
Can those numbers, do those numbers go out to families, the weekly positives?
Every week in my newsletter, there's a link that says COVID dashboard, and it has the two-week case count, both at the state and Douglas, percent positivity at the state level in Douglas, the percent per 100,000, and then it has the number of positive cases in each of the schools per week. Just visualizing.
Yeah.
And I try once a month, once every four to six weeks to update the vaccination rates based off of the state numbers. But when I started doing it in October, and I tracked it, it's only going up one or two percentage points every four to six weeks.
Yeah. So do you see the, the numbers of people with one dose moving over to the two, like, I haven't been seeing that, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Moving over to having two doses.
I see the one, and I see the two dose, and they're both going up about one or two percentage points every four to six weeks. We're really not getting those big, going from 70% to 75%, or 33% to 50%. It's going 32 to 35, 38 to 40, slow incremental jumps. Next, really excited about a partnership that we started with Nichols College. Late, late fall, early winter, I reached out to some people over at Nichols to see how we can work together to provide some additional opportunities for our students here at the high school. We had a meeting about six weeks ago with them, and really excited about some of the stuff that we're going to be doing with them this year and in future years. So a couple of things. One is juniors and seniors are going to have access to a criminal law and procedure class. They can go, go to Nichols College and take it. It meets Wednesday nights, starts the 16th. We have one student enrolled, and the cost is $350 for three credit course at Nichols. So we have one student doing it, which is better than zero. We're also going to join with them at the Nichols College Leadership Academy. There are two other school districts locally who do it, Northbridge and Webster, and we're going to start with our eighth grade cohort and added cohort every year. And what that looks like is about four or five times a year, kids will go and spend the day at Nichols College. There'll be leadership training that they do in the morning, and in the afternoon, they'll be a typical college student. They'll have the opportunity to eat in the cafeteria, study in the library, visit classes, and job shadow. So they get a full day experience at Nichols College, and they'll actually become Nichols College students and get it, and get an ID and have access for free for their library, to their sporting events, to enter any programs. So it's a good little thing for, for our students that, for that being part of a student. The next thing we're looking at with them is Nichols is going to be taking a look at our business and criminal justice courses. Josh is going to send over our course descriptions and our syllabus in each, in each of those courses. And if approved, a student who completes a criminal justice or a business course here will get three credits at Nichols. So again, it doesn't transfer to any other university, but if you take three or four criminal justice courses, if you take two or three business courses and they're approved, you could go to Nichols College in September of your freshman year with 15 credits for free under your belt, which isn't a bad, which isn't a bad, a bad thing. They also host a couple of times a year, DECA events with other students. So right now, Bill's going to various places to try to do scrimmages. Now we can just go right over to Nichols campus, be on their campus, and work with other schools and create other partnerships, which is awesome for our kids. And then we're also looking to do and add Shadow Student Athlete Day for our high school student athletes to be able to see what it is to be a Division III student athlete, maybe attend a practice, attend a meeting, go on campus, shadow a student. So these are all things Josh has been working on with our liaisons there. They're actively working with us to help write grants to pay for busing to get our kids there as well. They're looking at internal structures as to how they can help support that, and then we'll look at our own budget as to how to get our students over there. So it's pretty exciting and a good opportunity for students to have that partnership. Any questions?
Thank you, Josh.
I'll set it up. I just had the conversation.
It's awesome. Next, Project Lead the Way. Our elementary school just received a grant for Project Lead the Way for $11,000 over three years. So pretty exciting that next year, we're going to be able to implement Project Lead the Way at our elementary middle. We've already started here at the high school. Project Lead the Way has three different pathways. They have a pre-engineering, engineering pathway, they have a biomedical pathway, and they have a computer science pathway. So it's really ramping up those experiences for our students, and we're hoping to be able to keep some kids here as they start that pathway at the elementary and the middle, and can continue at the high school level and continue on that pathway and hopefully stay in Douglas. So we're really excited for that opportunity going forward.
Do we know what that would look like for elementary?
We don't. We, John just received the grant, I think it was either right before, either school vacation, I think, school vacation week or right before school vacation week. So we're in the process of working that. We met today to talk about, try to figure out what staffing looks like, when they're going to offer it for kids. I know at the middle school, as part of the STEM, Christine DeCesaray has a STEM class, and she's going to run a lot of the modulators through her STEM class. I know at the middle school, the modulators are 10, are 10-unit modulators, which roughly run about a month. So we're going to try to do two to three at the middle school, and then Josh has it here for year one.
Full course.
Full course. We're going to do year one, then we're going to build on year two.
Does that mean that there might be like choice, like choice for elementary kids where they could spend some time during the day doing some of this stuff, like?
I don't know if there'd be choice. So it would become one of, so right now, elementary school kids do library, they do art, they do music, they do PE. We'd add a fifth special.
Got you. Okay.
In essence, we'd add another special to their wheel.
Okay. Are there other schools in, doing that with elementary, the Project Lead the Way?
There are. I know that in, in the Blackstone Valley, we're actually the only district that doesn't do Project Lead the Way, so I'm happy that we're able to offer that to our students. I don't know what schools locally are doing it with elementary. I know high school, most high schools and middle schools are offering it. Which is awesome. Any questions about Project Lead the Way? All right. Now the fun stuff. Well, transition to the FY23 Superintendent's Preliminary Proposed Budget. I want to start off by thanking a lot of people. First off, to Courtney. This has been a very difficult budget year and budget cycle with a lot of unknowns and a lot of variables out there. So thank you to Courtney for putting this together, and, and there was a lot of work. Our admin team, principals, assistant principals, food service, tech director, all contributed heavily to this. So a big thank you to them. And again, this is a 30,000-foot view of, of our budget. The second slide is our mission statement, and I know we read it to start the school year off, but this is our value statement. This is what we believe, and this is what we strive to do, and our budget should represent what we strive to do. Do we have the money to do everything we want? Absolutely not. Is there any zip code in the Commonwealth that has the money to do everything they want? Absolutely not. Do the best we can with the resources we have to make sure that we offer those experiences that meet the academic, social, physical, and emotional needs of all of our kids. We want to do that in that safe, supportive, and challenging environment, so our kids are academically successful and show that personal growth. So it's important to start with that. I've also talked a lot for the past two years about our blueprint for student success and our improvement priority areas. And again, a lot of what we've done is focused on this, making sure we have that academic excellence and focusing on it, trying to build those community partnerships, which I'll touch on after this presentation. The social, emotional well-being of all is, is so important. Creating, making sure that kids are good local and global citizens, and promoting that growth mindset. Our goal when we created this budget is at minimum to provide a level service budget for the FY23 fiscal year. You'll hear words like level service, real needs, level funding. Level service means that we're trying to provide the same level of services in FY23 than we did in FY22. And I put that minimum because we're hoping maybe to go a little bit above what we were able to provide for our students this year. In order to provide for those educational needs, we took the following steps, and this is not an all-inclusive list, but just some highlights of things we did. We used a blueprint to prioritize as a guide what, what we valued. We met to review and discuss priorities as a leadership team. We did a thorough line item analysis to make sure we were maximizing our, our resources. Courtney did a great job looking at grants and revolving funds to see how we could offset the budget. We looked at our building schedules, how buildings were run, in order to maximize efficiencies. We had a great collaborative process with our town administrator and board of selectmen throughout, throughout this. I just want to highlight that as part of the process. And really, the priority was placed on maintaining the current level of services to all of our students. So next is a walkthrough of our preliminary proposed budget as of 3/2/22. So we'll start with the top line. Our FY22 general fund budget appropriation net offsets, meaning what we got in FY22 from the town was $14,727. Every year, the town has given us 1.5% above our previous year's appropriation. So our FY23 preliminary additional appropriation amount comes to $210,011. So if you take your FY22 general fund budget appropriation plus your 1.5 increase, you get an FY23 preliminary town appropriation of $14,210,738. Now, our FY23 preliminary proposed budget, meaning what do we need to run the Douglas Public Schools for the '22-'23 school year? And again, could we use more? Absolutely. But what we need to run the schools is going to cost us $17,973,738. What Courtney did, looked at grants and looked at revolving funds to offset that, she was able to come up with $2,943,305 in offsets, which leaves right now, at this point, our FY23 preliminary general fund budget at $15,030,433, or the difference of $819,695. So that's what, what we still have to reduce to get to the 14.2 million that the town has appropriated to us. It's a big number, but we'll talk about how we're going to get there over the next four to six weeks. The next page, and again, I'm sure you've seen this in other presentations, just kind of highlights where our money's being spent. So Courtney and I struggled a little bit, and we put things into six buckets. We could have gone more, but we tried to synthesize it and put it in six buckets. Five, sorry, five budgets. First one is salary and other compensation. That's, that's the bulk of our budget. Next is contractual services, special education, tuitions, building maintenance, our contractual services. Next, we have utilities, lights, electricity, phone, cable, supplies, which are paper, pencils, cleaning products, things, things we need. And then we call the next one "other" because we couldn't think of anything more creative to call it. And that's kind of a catch-all where we have a professional development. We have dues, we have memberships, where we pay for teach point, we might pay for iPass. So that's "other." So if you look at the first column, where it says FY23 operating budget, you see what we're spending in each of those five major buckets. If you add that together, you come to your $17.9 million.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So can you tell me, you know, like, where are we seeing the increases, that $3 million difference from FY22 to FY23? I'm just curious as to where, where are the changes coming?
So there's, there's a couple, there's a couple of things. So one, we went out for our oil bid. That went up $114,000 for oil from what we're projecting from last year to this year. Obviously, raises are an increase from one year to, to the next year. Our spent contracted services, which we have no control over, if we're sending kids to out-of-district placements, they raise their tuition, we have to pay it.
And even in, in district contractual services.
And then even in district contractual services. We always try to budget because we, we don't know what's going to happen from one year to the next. We always try to budget. We don't know how many kids are going to move into the district that may need an out-of-district placement, so we try to buffer that. That's really where the bulk of the, of the increases have been.
Okay. So we're not seeing anything like, any post-COVID type of, you know, like where we're getting back to normal, normal operation kind of increases here?
We haven't.
Okay.
What do you mean by that? Hold on.
Yeah, what do you mean by that? Yeah.
You know, like food service or things like that, you know, where, where maybe we had federal funds for it at one point?
Oh, food service isn't a part of this in any way, shape, or form.
They're 100% self-funded.
Okay. Or like, just any sort of grant that we might have gotten from COVID or anything like that, that.
So we still have, so fortunately, we still have ESER 2, which expires this year. ESER 3, we still have two years to, to spend that money. We have FY23 and FY24 to spend our ESER 3 money. We just applied for an SOA grant for about $100,000, which we'll know in a couple of weeks if we get that. So we're hoping to be able to bring in some additional grant money to help offset this.
Yeah. So this is very preliminary, and a lot of those grants, oh, in fact, all the ones that we got in the beginning were 100% for COVID, and as Dr. Vera mentioned, only the last one has more flexibility. And we still haven't made that determination yet because it's really kind of, we've been waiting to see on a number of different fronts, where things were going to land, and with regard to some other big budget items, too, where that was going to land, before we made a final determination on the best utilization of that grant. Because we did have the flexibility of the timeframe of '23 and into '24 as well, possibly. But we probably, I don't know how much we'll, we have for '24, but, so we still haven't made those determinations yet.
Thank you.
So that, that third column, you see where we're using our grants now revolving funds. Obviously, you want to try to not to use your one-time influxes of money to pay salaries. So you see a lot of it's going towards contracted services, towards utilities. So the, the second to last column, FY23 net general fund, that's that $15 million. I think the last column is pretty telling, and it shows people where the majority of our resources are going. Our salaries and compensation make up 85% of our budget.
By other compensation, we just mean hourly employees?
Curriculars, it's anything that's salary related in any way.
Stipends.
Yes. Because if that is, that is, it's other compensation that's in contracts.
But anything contractual is that, like, that includes like French River, like, second, second row, second row contractual.
French River would probably be, is in the, is in the second.
Oh, no, yeah, that would be in the second one, because that's not a salary. It's not a compensation. It's contract.
Okay.
Yes.
So the salaries are?
Yep. Only for our own, own staff.
All of our own staff salaries, but it includes, as Courtney said, coaches, stipends, co-curricular stipends, longevity.
Substitutes. Yep, all substitutes, yes. Honorariums, anything that's other compensation in any contract for our own employees.
So I know that this is still, there's a lot of unsettled parts in preliminary. I know that this is still like an estimate, but I've, well, I have two questions. Maybe I have three questions. One, do we have a sense of what proportion of the use of grants and revolving funds is grants, and what proportion is revolving funds?
Oh, most of it's revolving funds, and most of it is school choice. The predominance is always school choice and circuit breaker. There's a very small amount, it's a little bit, probably just over, if I remember correctly, just over $100,000 for preschool revolving fund. There's a very little bit in middle school and high school athletic funds. And then a very small amount now in Title I grant, because it used to be three times more. And then a very small amount now in Title I grant because it used to be three times more. So now it's a very small amount. And then the 240 grant offsetting special ed tuitions.
Okay.
And I only incorporate the ones that are yearly ongoing, grants that we receive every single year. I don't do the ones, you know, one time, right.
Okay. And then my second question, since I've never been on the budget subcommittee, is, has the school committee been, budget subcommittee been involved to this point? And if not, when and how do they become involved?
We, we're going to have a meeting on Friday and now we have one.
Or next week, I think next week.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. And then my last thought is just gut reaction as a person who's not on that committee and going line by line is that I'm nervous that if I'm looking at the total preliminary proposed budget, that 16.4% of that is use of revolving funds, not for like the one time shot. But then this is becoming that almost 18 million is going to become our baseline for the following year. In theory, I know that some expenditures will go out and the price of oil can change. It just seems, I know that we like took a bite out of some of our funds the last time around. I'm just a little.
Yeah, and I go over that with the budget subcommittee and I also will go over it with the full committee. And this is very preliminary.
And I know that you're conservative, Courtney.
Big things out there.
I know you are.
Well, prudently conservative. Well.
I'm not worried yet.
Well, I try, I do. Well, actually, you know, I am, and I always use the term prudently conservative. But yet, you know, just a full disclosure here. The last few years, we have, because we want to maintain this stability, we don't want to go backwards. So I don't mind admitting that, you know, it's been a very, you know, very, very deep discussion and looking at the figures and, you know, and my thing that I always say, and they can back me up, is as long as I know I can sleep at night, I'm okay. So I did, you know, push it up a little bit more last year because otherwise, you know, as long as I am still sleeping and I know that we're maintaining things that we do need for our students because that's what we're all here for. You know, it's such a balance, balance act because, you know, as a former superintendent, you still always say, it's the one thing I never forget, a child is only in first grade once. Or fifth grade, or ninth grade, or their senior year. It's a one-shot deal every year. So, you know, it's a real tough thing and that's why we have all of us talking and looking at it together because we need all of our heads, you know, coming from different perspectives as school committee members, parents, superintendent myself, and all of the admin team, leadership team. Because I don't want to unnecessarily hold on to so much that it's not there for the students in that one-shot deal year that they have to be in that grade. But yet, as long as I can sleep at night. So I'm never going to recommend something that I can't sleep at night.
I agree with you 100%. Obviously, like it's a delicate balance between using the resources you have to the fullest and giving students everything you can and making sure that you have sustainability.
Right, exactly, exactly. Oh, it's not just me. It really is a conservative and you guys have all been great. And I do need those other heads too, looking at it. I can't just bounce it off myself because after a while, I can't even hear myself. So I, you know, I do need to, you know, bounce it off other, we have other eyes on it and thinking about it because it's those different perspectives that we each have that lend to that group decision, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So again, that last column, you can see the percentages of the budget. So when people say, can't you cut supplies? Supplies, I mean, once you stop.
Not going to cut it.
You could cut, like we're $819,000 off. If we cut all of our supplies for next year, it's half of what we still need to cut. So even if you cut, you know, 10% of your supplies, it's really not putting a massive dent in anything. So that's.
And we do need supplies.
And we do need supplies. So the next slide, we could spend some time on is, again, we talked about it early. We've been looking at this for a while now, but we are extremely cautiously optimistic that we can close the budget doing the following things. One, additional reductions through line item analysis. We're going to go back and look at those line items and say, where can we tweak? Where can we cut? What can we do? Courtney's extremely prudently conservative.
I wouldn't say extremely really, but it's just a lot of analysis. It's just a lot of analysis, but I wouldn't say I'm extremely conservative.
Prudently conservative. I'm going to say you are, but it's okay. With the possible use of revolving funds, and just for people to kind of understand revolving funds, we use our school choice and we want to make sure we have a healthy school choice budget in case something happens. We don't know, something could happen to the roof, something could happen with snow, something could happen to a boiler. We have, we have four months left in the school year. As we get closer to the end of the school year and we shrink the amount of days that are available, Courtney becomes more and more comfortable sometimes. A little bit.
Something big could happen on June 30th.
I know. But she becomes a little bit more comfortable with how those funds are used.
In fact, we were discussing today that I did that analysis for the school committee a little while back where I did the line to line, dumped it in Excel and actually went to every single line projected. So I'll be doing that in the next few weeks, as I was explaining to Paul, because we are closer to the end of the school year. So it's easier and you're more confident not only that there's more money that you can see that maybe we can be freeing up, this will be left over in the general fund to utilize for the following year too as well. But I did already incorporate $200,000 of that already in these figures, so.
We're hoping for a potential increase in our town allocation beyond the 1.5%. We've been talking to the town administrator, so that could increase, there's a possibility of that. And there's a potential increase in grant funding. As I said, there's an SOA grant that we applied for $100,000. A portion of that plus a portion of our ESER 3 funds could be used to offset that deficit. So we're confident we can, we can close that. As I started off, things are continuously evolving and there are some pretty big variables out there that we hope in the next month, we can, we can close out. So once we have a better picture on those variables, then this becomes a lot more solidified.
And if you don't mind saying, one more thing along those lines is another thing, just to remind everyone that we had four union contracts this year, one of them being a new one, that rarely happens. So for the next three years, we'll be able to do it sooner, have the numbers pretty concrete on most of our budget.
But every three years, it's going to be.
I know, but let's not.
We'll talk about that.
Let's just relish in this wonderful time of, you know. Because trying to prepare a budget where 85% of it, you have no idea what's going to end up, you know.
You know, we'll talk about when we get to.
So we're going to be much better off going forward.
Yeah, when we get to the paraprofessional and the ABA job description, we negotiated an ABA and a paraprofessional contract. We started that from scratch. We started it in the summer and then we finally finalized that in the fall. We did our cafeteria workers, we did our custodians and we're working with the teachers' union. So we had all of those contracts out there. But even for the paraprofessionals, ABA, custodians and cafeteria workers, that wasn't finalized until October, November of this year. So there's a lot of variables still out there. What are our next steps? We have a school committee meeting on two weeks from tonight, Wednesday, the 16th, in which I'll give an update. When we meet with budget subcommittee next week, we'll talk about whether or not we need to have an additional school committee meeting on March 23rd. We'll be presenting to finance committee on March 22nd. We're going to continue that great open dialogue we've had with our town administrator and members on the municipal side to see what we can do for the budget. We have to by law have a public hearing on Wednesday, the 6th, where we have to get down to that town appropriation. And then we have our annual town meeting on Monday, May 2nd at seven o'clock. I would say second o'clock, but that's not a time, at seven o'clock. So we get a 30,000 foot view of our budget. And then, once those variables become crystallized, we could dive a little bit deeper into this and kind of help massage and smooth out the corners of this, of the budget. Questions on it?
This was really nicely laid out, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Next, I know I've talked about it a couple of different times, a family and community, you said it, thanks. A family and community partnership. We received a grant through the Department of Education to partner with a school and main institute for how we can better improve our dialogue and our partnerships with, between the schools and the families. The one thing that the pandemic taught us is how important that partnership between the school and the home is. So we're really proud of this. So I want to go over the process with you. So the third slide, which talks about SMI methods and district supports. This was really a great process. It wasn't something that was done quickly. We started off with three cross district meetings. We partnered with three other school districts and we met three times throughout the fall to kind of look at the process, learn from each other. What are some schools doing? What are we doing that works? What are other districts doing that works in order to start this process? They came in and they virtually held focus groups with, four different focus groups, with parents and caregivers, with students grades five through 12 and with teachers. And they were able to have a dialogue with them and in some instances, there was a survey that was done. And then we, as a district, had three meetings with them, which we were able to reflect on family and school partnerships in the district. We did some reflection work, we did some theme work and we ended up coming up with a plan. The next few slides, I'm not going to go through them one by one. There's a lot of content on them, but I'll leave them up here for a few seconds for the committee to look at them and anyone who's at home to look at them. And obviously, this will be posted on the website. Here's an example of some of the focus group questions that were asked of family members, of teachers and frontline staff and students. And as you can see, they're pretty open-ended questions that sparked some good dialogue with people who were interviewed. The three big questions that they wanted asked are here. This is really what they were trying to get at. You can see what about partnerships seems to be working well? What did we learn from the pandemic? And what opportunities can we deepen and build upon that partnership with families? The next slide is that feedback that they received. So again, I'm not going to go through all the content, but I'll leave it up for a few seconds for people to look at. But the first one is what is working with families? And this is from the perspective of staff. What seems to be working well in those partnerships with families from the staff point of view? Next slide is themes from family and caregivers. So based off of their interviews and their discussions with families and caregivers, what seems to be working well? The next slide was themes from students. I think these are just our fourth through, our fifth through, sixth through eighth graders when they interviewed them. And lastly, we have themes from staff. So what they did, the school and main institute observations, there's about 11 of them here. What they did is they took all the information from our meetings, from those focus groups, from those surveys, from those interviews and came up with their observations. And they're pretty spot on. First is, there's a bit of a status quo culture. We've always done it that way. It seems to be working. It kind of works. So there's that status quo culture, spot on. Individual staff have that vision of how family partnerships work with, inside their classrooms. But we as a district or schools as their own entities don't have that vision as to what that partnership looks like. And they're spot on. We don't, we need to work on that. We don't have a mechanism in place for how can we collect information and data from parents, students and staff as to how we can increase and better those partnerships. There was a feeling of, is there a sense of urgency in this work? There's a lot of competing priorities. So where does building those partnerships fit in with what we're doing as a district? There was the notion of parent teacher conferences need to change and we could be doing them better. And again, spot on. Adults mentioned that as kids go, as kids go up in grade level, parent involvement decreases. So you see it a lot at the primary and the elementary. By the time you get to junior and senior, you might have a half dozen parents who come. We don't offer professional development as to how we can better those relationships. Teachers, again, could not articulate a clear vision from the district as to what that looks like. Parents felt that we need to better utilize them as a resource inside our schools. Parents felt like they want to be seen more as a partner in it and not as an information and communication. We do a great job communicating with parents. We do a great job sharing information. What we need to do a better jobs, how can we partner with them? And then the student perspective is that they feel like things are working, but it was interesting to hear their feedback. And the last piece was finally, what are their recommendations and their action plan? So I don't know if you do number one first or you do number two first, but this was the order they presented it. What's our vision? What do we want to do? What does partnerships mean? What do we want it to look like? What's our vision as a district? What are the visions in each of the schools? How do they align? We need to collect data from families as to how we can better serve families, students and staff within our school district. Courtney loved number three.
I did. Been talking about that for years.
How can we increase, how can we get parents more involved in our schools? They're a great resource. How can we invite them into our community? Courtney was kind enough to share that when she was younger, she ran the parent volunteer group.
Well, I was a volunteer coordinator in one school district, but I also volunteered when I was an ad hoc mom for eight years in the school district. And I love the work of our volunteer coordinator that, you know, I worked under. And one of the programs that I worked with, well, I'm very.
Go, 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 go.
But it was a wonderful program where, and it was a holistic approach of in the home, the school, the connection between school and home. And one of the people that I worked with, I still run into her, it's been 25 years and she still remembers my working with her and her, you know, I actually helped her get her GED and then someone else helped the family as well. And then there was that connection with the school and I really loved it. So I've been kind of, sort of advocating for a volunteer coordinator thing and volunteer program, but okay, I said it.
I gave you the end. And then finally, we're having open houses. So obviously, this isn't something that's done in two, three weeks or two, three months. This is, we're going to start this year and have it bleed over into next year. But this is our recommendation and a blueprint for how we can continue to build those partnerships. And if you remember when I started the budget presentation, one of those things that we have in these five priority areas is the community partnerships. And this here gets us our blueprint for how we can better involve families within the school. So excited to start this work. Again, we started back in probably October, November, but now we can roll up our sleeves and start working on it.
What is SMI?
School and main institute.
Main, M-A-I-N?
M-A-I-N.
Is that a Massachusetts organization?
I got the impression they were, but the representatives who were part of them were scattered throughout the US.
Okay. And then when you are, so all these questions and the data that they collected was from four schools in Massachusetts?
It was from us. All this was from the Douglas Public Schools.
Okay.
How did they select the focus groups? Like, I know you're not going to say names, but like what size sampling is this or?
So it's small. It's not, it's not a big sample. So what I did is over three or four newsletters, I sent out information that said, if anyone, here's what we're doing, if you'd like to be part of a focus group, please send me your name and I will forward you the link for it. So I think we might have had six, seven, eight parents who did it for our kids. Josh, I figured how many kids you had?
I only had two. That's why my data isn't in there because the rest of them all had tests. They had tests or whatever, so they opted not to come.
But Bob had about 50 kids. Bob had 50, 60 kids who did. And then for staff, what we did is principals released staff from a faculty meeting. I think we had about six or seven staff members from each of the buildings participate in it. So again, it wasn't a huge massive sample size, but the feedback that we got is pretty spot on with what's happening.
Yeah, it's funny because some of the individual comments, like I'm a smidge surprised about, but when it goes to recommendations and action plan, like, I don't know, that jives with sort of what I see too. I think that there's a, like, I don't know what it is supposed to be like at the upper grade, like at the higher grades. But I do feel that there's this very, like, kind collegial sort of relationship between the schools, between the district and families. On the, you know, on the brighter side. I'm sure there's some, I'm sure there's some unpleasant relationships too. But in general, I feel like it's that, but it's not the same thing as, I don't know how to say it. I feel like it's that, but it's not the same thing as, I don't know how to say it. I feel like the kids have this deep relationship with the staff. I feel like the kids obviously have a deep relationship with their families, but I feel like the families don't necessarily have a deep relationship with the buildings and with the schools. Even if you come, like, even if I come in with my pot of soup for the thing, you know, I feel like, here I am, here's my soup, and I'll tiptoe away. And that could just be me personally, but I do have that sort of sense that if somebody's a regular sub, then they feel like at place. But I do think that there's opportunity to sort of grow that bond with families also.
Courtney, why don't you share some of the stuff you shared with me that you did? I know you're.
No, I'm just, oh, no, I have my mummy hat on right now.
Two minutes.
I say that often in leadership team meetings, ask them. I have to, I've got my mummy hat on now. But anyway.
But some of the stuff you did as volunteer coordinator and some of the things that parents did to build that partnerships, can you just talk about three or four of the things you highlighted with me when we met?
I don't remember that, what I highlighted with you. But I don't know, because I worked in Uxbridge where we had Linda Saris, who was a volunteer coordinator. And basically, it's almost like a program where you, it's very professional and, you know, there's a process and everything, but you also are aligning the interests of parents and how they want to, and it's more about utilizing the skills and the knowledge and the passions, I guess is a good word, of the parents to come and help not only the own child, but all the students in the district. And I think that really is a good, a good bridge gap. You're basically, you're looking for the skill sets and the interest from various parents. And not only that, I think it's very important, especially in this day and age, oh, particularly in this day and age, because we've become, we've got so far away from the extended family and the importance of that, the nuclear family, that we're missing so much that you can bring in elderly people to sit and read and talk about their experiences, you know, and get that generational aspect, the knowledge, the skills. And then you can also get the career aspect from everyone coming in with their careers. I mean, to me, it's, I mean, I can't even, this is like such a big thing with me. There's just so much that you can do. And then I think that would help immensely with what you're talking about.
Right. And I think.
They would feel welcome in part of the school district.
Right.
For those that want to do it.
Right.
And can do it, I should say as well.
I think that casting that net into the community as a whole, not just to parents and caregivers of students, is really smart too. Like, I.
Yes.
I remember there was an elderly man who used to come and teach us about poetry. That was his passion. He did it in elementary school, middle school, high school, and he was our biggest cheerleader at all sporting events. He didn't have kids in the district anymore. They had long since graduated. And he came all the time. And it was like, from a young child age to senior in high school, you felt that you mattered to the community, that you were cared for, and you learned a skill. Like, he introduced me to poetry when I was in second grade.
That's fabulous.
There's a lot of opportunity to, I think that maybe some of the hesitation sometimes is like, teachers have so much to do, right? So many things to get done. It's like, where's the time in the day for their space and their time to be able to open up to these other things? So I think that that can be challenging.
Then I might allow them sometime, those two to do things.
Right, take a break. Plan, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, to me, there's no, there's no downside. And what you just, what you just described is a village. And what do they say? It takes a village to raise a child, right?
And it's even like, Courtney did some pretty, like, big-sized projects, but even if you did things where allowing parents to come in on a child's birthday to eat lunch with them, especially at the primary and the elementary school, and at that opportunity after then, having the parent go to the classroom and read a story inside the classroom, you're building partnerships. And from there, a parent and a teacher are having a more organic conversation to say, oh, my gosh, I didn't know you could, or this is great, or do you mind if I? And that's how you build, that's how you build those bridges. Mystery reading is a great way to have parents come inside classrooms. Again, COVID kind of stopped that. Our science teachers, if you go down to our elementary schools, they do some pretty cool hands-on stuff with scientists. I'm sure there are parents out there who'd love to come in and help partner with a teacher to do that. When you look at some of these science experiments, they're multi-part, they're multifaceted. It'd be great for a teacher to have an extra set of hands in there with a parent volunteer to work on it. Again, there are so many things that can come from it.
Yeah.
Both very, very small to building, we have the senior center down at the bottom of the hill. It'd be great to be able to start building those partnerships, having them come up and read to kids, having them come up and do some stuff. I'm sure we have veterans that would love to come in as history classes are talking about. So again, we could, we could go on and on. I think we hit our three-minute limit.
Or a scientist coming, you know, you talk about science class, you know, for any child at any age, they're working on something in a very, you know, closed, in a classroom, talking about science. It doesn't, they can't really relate that to anything. If you have a scientist come from somewhere and come in and talk about their job at the appropriate age and relate what they're doing to what they're doing, you might spark a lifelong interest in becoming a scientist.
So how are we, so how able are we right now to accommodate somebody who is interested in doing that stuff? Or say, hey, you know, like, I've got something I'd love to share, or I'd love to come read to the class? Like, how are we able to accommodate that now?
So now, yeah, so what we need to start off is we need to create that vision. And we need to do that, those surveys for how parents want, how parents want to partner with us. Because we have our ideas, but we also need to ask staff and families how they want to partner.
Because grandparents are part of it.
Grandparents are part of it too. So my goal for this year, hopefully, between now and the end of June, is to get those surveys out, to get that information from families, from kids, from staff members, and create that vision as to what is the vision of the Douglas Public Schools for how we're going to create those partnerships. Then over the summer and next year, we can look at how we begin to implement, implement that vision. I know that Cindy has already reached out to people for, I think, the 30th and 31st of March to come in and be a guest reader. We can start expanding, we can start expanding on that. Again, we just were mask optional a couple, a couple days ago. So we need to build that momentum, but I would love to start having, especially at the younger levels, parents and families coming in and partnering with us. We did, I did, I've seen in some other things, doing a real intergenerational project between juniors and seniors at high school and partnering with someone from the senior center and working collaboratively on a project and researching it and working on it together and presenting it as kind of like a capstone project. That's a great thing that you can see done. Again, we've hit our three-minute limit, but we can go on and on and on for how to do it. But I want to start this year with getting that survey information and creating a vision. And I think that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the school committee and subcommittee reports, we have the consent agenda to review the January 19 meeting minutes.
These are the ones that we tabled?
Yeah, this is what we tabled.
Yeah, I already looked at this.
And you're good?
Yeah.
Are they looking for a motion?
We have the motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes for January 19, 2022.
Motion made by Lisa, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Monique. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to have to abstain because I wasn't there.
And Becky abstained.
Although I did.
Everybody looked at them? Are they looking for a motion?
We have the motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of February 2, 2022.
Motion made by Lisa, I need a second, please.
Second.
Second by Becky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Onto the February 23 meeting minutes.
I did watch these on Zoom, so I don't think I have to abstain.
Everybody had a time to look at it? Anything, are they looking for a motion?
Did it say it's on Zoom? It's called to order. It doesn't say that it was a Zoom meeting. We could amend it.
Did it say it was Zoom?
The meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube and recorded for future rebroadcasting. So just add Zoom.
Yeah, we'd add Zoom.
That's on the beginning. Do you want to vote it as amended by adding the, it was a Zoom meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes for February 23, 2022 as amended.
Motion made by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Becky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next one is the EFDA charge and collection of payment and of school meals policy, first reading.
Yes, we're bringing to you this evening the first reading on an update to a policy that came to be needing to be updated because an update to the law. Just a little bit of background, do it unpaid, school lunch is not being allowed pursuant to USDA regulations. Districts use various options to attempt to collect. And, you know, it's changed over the years and kind of morphed a little bit. One of them was offering a sun butter sandwich rather than the regular meal and just different things. Just, you know, notices arson home regularly, but if that did not work, other options for lunch were utilized over the years. Several years ago, regulations required that districts were not allowed to have unpaid balances. And I don't know if you remember, but probably about five years ago, we had a huge amount, it was like $21,000 for years worth, like, maybe even decades, that we basically had to reclass school lunch expenditures from the school lunch revolving fund account, which is made above the fees and the state and federal reimbursement and such, into the general fund to bring it down to whole. Since that time, it's varied to around $500, $800 that's been outstanding, and we've been doing the same thing. So this, recently, they had this law that passed on the anti-lunch shaming law under Chapter 62 of the Acts of 2021. And it did contain a number of provisions that prohibit school districts from doing certain things due to outstanding lunch debt. So we basically just updated our current policy, which we've had for a number of years, which we've attached here, to be in line with the new law. So instead of just giving you a clean one, I wanted to give you for the first reading in particular, to see what was crossed out. And what other things? Okay. So what I did, as far as on page, let's see, two, on the third page about midway, I do say that all charges not paid before the end of the school year must be dealt with through other means such as reclassifying expenditures through the general fund budget or appropriate donation account or other means pursuant to new USDA regulations. Typically, it is a general fund. There are, say, if we receive a donation, I know that some, it's been on the news actually several times, in some towns, someone will give a donation and say this can be used to pay off outstanding debts, things of that nature, but it still must be dealt with and you cannot do anything like give a sun butter sandwich. They still have to get their regular lunch. Because in essence, really what it comes down to is, it's not the child's fault. Okay? And really, they want to put the burden on the parents or the district, but remove any ramifications for a child in school in trying to get their lunch. This is not, this only applies to the lunch and the breakfast, which is reimbursable. It does not apply to the à la carte items, because those are bought separately. That has nothing to do with school lunch.
Or a second lunch.
Right, right. Thank you. So basically, we're just, we're just updating it to cross off any of those things that you just cannot have pursuant to that new law. So I didn't know if anybody had any other questions?
Next item is the JLCCB life-threatening allergy policy statement, our first reading.
So as part of our wellness committee, we started looking at some of our wellness policies and some of our allergy policies. So first one we're looking at is a life-threatening allergy policy statement. This was last worked on in May of 2006. So lots happened in schools in May of 2006. So this is a complete rewrite of what we had. So obviously, we know that, we recognize that students with life-threatening allergies require accommodations to be safe and to be able to access the curriculum inside of schools. We're going to make sure that we continue to be in compliance with state and federal mandates and guidelines that have been established by DESI. And they put, they put out a document entitled Managing Life-Threatening Food Allergies in Schools, which is a guide that our nurses use as to how we can work with students who have life-threatening allergies. The second environment, the second statement speaks a little bit as to the how and what we do here as a district. So establishes guidelines for building-based plans, training for personnel, establishing individual care plans. So this is just a statement of how we're going to address and what we use as a guideline for life-threatening allergies. And when you looked at the old policy, it was dated, it had some language in there that was old. And again, it was last looked at in 2006, so this is a refresh of the policy to make sure it's just up to date and current.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the DECA overnight field trip in Boston, Mass.
The DECA Club, which is a business and entrepreneurship club, is, they have some students who qualified for the state meet, which is going to occur in Boston, March 10 to 11. And so their plan is to spend the night in Boston, participate in the whole spectrum of activities. There are five students who are going to go along with Mr. Hillman as their chaperone. The trip itself is going to be paid for by the students through fundraising and then by student individual payment for whatever they didn't, weren't able to raise towards their fees. And then we'll need a sub for Mr. Hillman for two days, but that sub for Mr. Hillman is the only expense to the actual district. It's a great opportunity for those kids. We've had a lot of success with DECA and we'd really like to be able to get our kids involved in this trip, with your permission.
Anyone have any questions?
I just want to kind of give them a shout out. It hasn't really been a club for very long, right? And I feel like.
Two years.
Right. And then the first year, they did really well at this convention, I think.
Last year, they actually qualified for nationals.
Last year too.
Participate because of, you know, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's awesome.
Kids jumped on this. It's been great.
This is a success, so it's nice to hear that. So I'd be looking for a motion.
Move to approve the overnight field trip to the DECA State Career Development Conference at the Hines Convention Center in Boston on March 10 through March 12, 2022.
Motion made by Lisa, looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Becky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Moving on to job descriptions, job descriptions for our paraprofessionals and our ABA therapists.
So as I mentioned earlier, the paraprofessionals and ABAs formed a union last year. We met with them over the summer and in the fall to negotiate a contract. And part of that negotiation was the creation of a job description, both for the paras and for the ABAs. Big thank you to Courtney, who worked to put this document together. She culled from.
Yeah, you did, you interrogated.
Yeah, yeah. She culled from a lot of different resources to put this together. I took a look at it. Tara Soboleski took a look at it, and this is what we came up with. From there, what we did is we presented it to the DESPA, the paraprofessionals and the ABAs. They took a look at it. They gave their input and feedback on it. We tweaked it a little bit. We sent it back to them and they said, we're happy with it. It looks great. We looked at it, we said, we're happy with it. It looks great. We said, our next step is to go to school committee and get it approved. So this is, you know, a lot of work on Courtney's front end to get a lot of the verbiage here. Tara and I looked at it to tweak it. And again, the DESPA, paras and our ABAs looked at it, gave their input and their suggestions and their tweaks to it. And what you're looking at is the final product, that collaborative project.
And to their credit, if you don't mind my saying, you know, they had, they only had one tiny little thing that they, as far as the paras and ABAs, won, which was a good, good input. And so it's been a great experience with regard to that too.
It means that we were spot on in creating the job description as well, which is good too.
Any questions on the two job descriptions? I'd be looking for a motion.
There is not an agenda item, so I just moved to accept.
We just need to accept it.
Yep, the, the paraprofessional in the um, applied behavior analyst, ABA, um, job descriptions as presented.
What Courtney said, so we have to vote on it?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Lisa, second by Becky, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the disposal of the primary school desks and cabinets that have no value.
Um, yes, um, Mrs. Sosha at the primary school did have to clean out um, one of her rooms, um, which was a good thing, the storage room, um, to make room for our music classroom. So she had four teacher desks and two metal cabinets, both from the 1970s, that were removed from this room. They've actually been out by the dumpster since the summertime. But you know, it's been a little bit busy, so we finally did was get this taken care of and get them actually disposed of. Um, so they're really, they're not, they're dented, rusted, not in good condition, and they've been outside since the summertime, so. Um, there's really no financial impact. The uh, our disposal company will come and pick them up because they're right next to the dumpster, so.
So there's no extra cost to that? Being like the large items, there's no extra cost of disposal?
Oh, there might be, it's, it's, it's not going to be much at all, you know? I mean, I want to, financially impact wise, you know, we have to get rid of them, so, yeah.
Any questions? Are they looking for a motion?
Move to approve the disposal of four teacher desks and two metal cabinets that are damaged and of no value.
Second.
Motion made by Lisa, second by Becky, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is the stipend for nurses.
Right, so back in the fall, the school committee graciously approved a stipend for $2,000 for each of our nurses. Um, I think I came to end of September, beginning of October to recognize the work that they've been doing outside of, of the school, they are on weekends. We were in a very unique situation last year and, and in the fall, when a parent would call, a parent would email, we needed them to respond. So we wanted to recognize the work that they were doing on nights and weekends, and the school committee graciously approved a $2,000 stipend. I don't think any of us saw Omicron and the impact of Omicron um, over the months of December and January. Their workload spiked tremendously um, during, during that timeframe for what they had to do in order to be able to meet the needs of kids, make sure we were safe, safe in schools. So consistent with what area school districts have done is, for that timeframe, they offered an additional stipend to nurses for the time that they dealt with in Septem, I'm sorry, in December and January with, with the spike. So what we're looking for is a, is a one-time stipend to recognize the work that happened during those, those two months. This would come from an S3 grant, and what we're looking for is $1,500 for the three nurses who were in the district for the full two months. Um, $1,000 for one of the nurses who was here for six of the eight weeks, and then $500 for one of the nurses who was here for two of the eight weeks. Um, and again, I reached out to area schools, and a lot of schools during the spike were doing additional things for, for the nurses, recognizing that we saw our numbers go from four, five, six kids to double, triple that. In addition to that, all the contact tracing that was happening, happening a, as a result of it. So this is just in recognition of, of that time, so. Happy to answer questions.
Would they receive the stipends in like the next payroll cycle?
No, it'd be the, the end of the year.
Why is it at the end of the year? Why does it go that way?
Because at the end of the, because it's, well, the $2,000 was for the whole, I'd have to give some thought to that, but the $2,000 one is for the whole year.
Yeah.
Um,
This stipend here?
Maybe we, we could do it because it was for a timeframe. Yeah. Yeah, we could, we could, because we actually have to change the motion here.
Okay.
It's provided down here, because I actually had, had updated it to um, to state the names, because Jean had asked that to be stated. So we, we need to update that, um, to be very, very clear.
Could we just say one time? A one-time stipend?
Yeah, I had that in there too, yes. Yes, mm-hmm. Okay. All righty, let's see, Kathy.
Any other questions? Courtney can read the updated motion.
Sorry, just so to clarify further, for the $2,000 one, that was like for the work they had done and projecting what they were going to do out for the remainder of the year.
The $2,000 was for the entire school year, given the fact that a person, a parent might e, a parent might email them saying, my kid's symptomatic, what do I do?
Yeah.
My kid's symptomatic, what do I do?
Right.
Um, a staff member calls them up and says, I have the sniffles, how many days do, am I out? A parent emails, so that's for that, all that stuff they're doing outside the school.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
The entire year.
That makes sense to me. I just thought when we approved it, it was sort of the way that, I know that this is specifically to Omicron.
Yeah.
But at that time, I had thought it was more like the work they had done to that point. Because I mean, obviously, like COVID was a problem in the previous school year too. So I thought it was more like a one time, you know, like the way an honorary, like a one time, here it is, like an honorarium or something, but I get it.
Courtney, do you want to read?
So I'm going to actually, if you don't mind, I'm going to have to actually read it and move, and then you can second? Because I want it to be very specific. I'm just trying to remember, okay. So move to approve the following stipends for nurses. Okay, I'm just, hold on right now, okay. Okay. Yeah, that's the way I'll do it, okay. Move to approve the following stipends for nurses. The first one will be um, the amount of $1,500 for nurses who worked here for the full two months. And the $1,500 will be for Melanie Brundage and Melanie Gauscher. $1,000
And Jen Walker.
No, that's just $1,000.
No.
Okay, no, do I have that wrong?
The $1,500 is for Mel, Mel and Jen.
That's what I have, that's what I just said.
Mel, Mel and Jen Walker. Three people for the $1,500.
Okay, because it's five, I'm sorry, I forgot about the other, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was thinking, right, okay, sorry. Jennifer Walker, okay, and then this one, right. I'm sorry, I forgot about um, Heather, right, I'm sorry, yeah, because she's already, yeah. Okay, hopefully I can get this, okay? All right, we will start again. Okay, move to approve the following stipends for nurses for their extra work, um, associated with COVID as a result of the Omicron spike. $15.
$1,500.
$1,500, sorry, for Melanie Brundage, Jennifer Walker and Melanie Gauscher. One, who worked here for the full two months. $1,000 for Heather Tarantino, who worked in December and part of January. And $500 for Kathy Campbell, who worked part of December. And this is a one-time payment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Becky, second by Monique, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we're moving over to the school business and operations manager report for transfers and reclassifications.
Um, I don't have any this evening, I'll be getting caught up on those after we finish the budget and everything else. Um, but I just want to let you know that I hope to finalize, hoping to finalize by the end of this week, the um, invitation for bids, the IFB for the bus transportation. And just to remind you that it was approved at town meeting, that we can, I can issue the IFB for the three years, which is always allowed by master in law, three years, but also with an additional, at our discretion, additional um, two years. So it would be from FY '23, for '23, '24, '25, and then '26 and '27. But it's always at our discretion, um, depending on whether it makes sense financially for the district, 100% our discretion. So we will be, I'll be sending that out, and I will let you know what happens, and keep your fingers crossed. So hopefully it won't be too bad. Hopefully we'll get a bid. Yeah.
That's key.
And that's it.
Well, thank you, Courtney. Any topics not anticipated for this evening? I know we need to move into executive session to discuss the strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of an open meeting that may be detrimental to the effects of bargaining and litigation process of a government body, and to conduct collective bargaining to review the contract language and propose revision strategies for a successful completion of an agreement between the Douglas School Committee and the Douglas Teachers Association, teachers' contract. And to discuss, I don't think we're doing that this evening. To discuss the deployment of the security personnel or devices, we're going to do that too as well. We will not come back into public session for the school committee, we will adjourn from there.
And we just want to note the time?
Um, we need to make a motion?
We need to do roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote, sorry, roll call vote to go into executive session?
Yeah.
8:19.
Becky Charneak, aye.
Lisa Brown, aye.
Monique Salvis, aye.
Heather Moore, aye.
Thank you all, our next school committee meeting is on March 16th.
Good night, everyone.